To order, welcome everybody that might be here in council chambers or viewing through the Internet. This is a special city council work session called today at 5:00 PM on Tuesday, October 24th, 2023. Let's have a pledge of allegiance, and I've asked Council Staley to lead us in that, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All work session items listed are for discussion only. No action can or will be taken. The primary purpose of work session meetings is to provide the city council with the opportunity for in-depth discussion and study of specific subjects. Public comment is not provided for on the agenda and may be made only as approved by consensus of the council. In appropriate circumstances, a brief presentation may be permitted by a member of the public or another interested party on an agenda item if invited by the mayor or city manager to do so. The mayor may limit or end the time for such presentations. Call to order. Clerk Meredith.
Mayor Watkins.
Here.
Vice Mayor Samley.
Here.
Councilmember Eric.
Here.
Councilmember Savage.
Here.
Councilmember Scott Staley.
Present.
Councilmember Walker.
Here.
Councilmember Ward.
Here.
We have a call.
Thank you. Item number one, City of Kingman, 150-plus or minus acres conceptual site plan. The firm of Selberg &amp; Associates was selected to complete a mixed-use development conceptual plan for the city-owned property parcel APN Arizona parcel number 322-63-002 and 322-63-003. Carl, what does APN stand for? Did I say that?
Sorry, was not paying attention.
I'm sorry, APN?
What is this? APN?
Assess parcel numbers. Sorry.
Thank you.
I should have asked the vice mayor. This is her expertise. Approximately 150-plus or minus acres adjacent to the future Kingman Crossing interchange. The draft conceptual plan is attached and will be presented for council discussion and direction. Let's turn some time over to our interim city manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mayor and council, tonight, as you're aware, the city-owned property near the Kingman Crossing interchange, you're going to hear from the team that actually helped develop the concept plan for this. Before we hear from them, though, I'd like to go ahead and have our economic development director Bennett Bradley come up and say a few words, and then he'll turn it over to the team that was behind what you have in front of you tonight. With that, Mr. Bradley.
Thank you. Get this thing loaded quickly. Wrong one. Oh, got it. You jinxed me. There we go. Did that work? Aaron. You got it. Go back a couple of slides, Aaron, if you're controlling that. All right. Thank you. So, Mayor, council members, thank you for taking the time to participate in this work session regarding the 150 acres of city-owned property. The economic development team started this project earlier in the spring of this year with Selberg &amp; Associates. We hope that through this work session and council's feedback, staff can move forward with the Selberg &amp; Associates to complete the conceptual plan. The completion of this project will allow the economic development team to add to our, we call the economic development toolbox. So we feel like it'll be a beneficial tool to continue to look at and attract future prospective commercial and retail development to Kingman. Our team sees this property as a location where the community and travelers can shop and as a place-making space for entertainment and quality of life amenities, creating public spaces that contribute to the community's health, happiness, and well-being. The subject property is located near the proposed Kingman Crossing interchange. The APN numbers were listed earlier. It's 322-63-001, 002, and 003. How do you?
Left click your mouse.
All right. There we go. Okay. So I kind of went through that slide there. So, a little bit of background information also on the property. The intent for the conceptual plan that we're looking at is to show investors, developers, retail, and business opportunities a concept of what uses could exist based on the existing zoning, which is KC-PDZ, and future completion of the Kingman Crossing interchanges. The concept plan will not be used to market the property, but to be as a visualization tool to show what uses could be attracted to this location. The conceptual plan, it's not a finalized site plan tied to any specific uses. It can be changed when a commercial developer or prospective retailer is interested in the development of the site. Just another note, the existing Kingman Crossing interchange intergovernmental agreement between the city and KX Ventures LLC does have restrictions that do not allow for marketing the site. So they do have what's called a first right of refusal to any prospective retail or commercial developments for commercial property directly across from their property, which is this one. If KX Ventures exercises that right and refuses a prospective developer, a commercial develop, the city could then open discussions with that potential project. And as I indicated earlier, our team sees this as an additional tool for economic development, retail, quality of life, those type of things. So at this time, I would like to invite Sylvia, our economic development manager, up to discuss some of the general plan and zoning district information around this current proposal.
Bennett, before you go, how many years is it until we can start building on this property? There's a timeline, right?
So, this might be referencing 2024?
Yeah, with the city marketing restriction technically expires January 1st of '24.
Okay.
But having said that, that may be some of those dates that may be adjusted because of the state of emergency and the pause that we put on that agreement. Those dates haven't been updated yet, and I think we're still waiting on some discussions with those developers to do that.
We would have to approve those?
Any updates? Yeah, I have to come back to council. We'd be amending the agreement, so.
And then, it isn't just the marketing, though. It's also when we would be able to either sell our side or develop it as well.
Correct. That's all part of it.
And it's still January 2024?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification.
Good afternoon, Mayor, council. Thank you for having me here tonight. But, so basically, I'm going to do a little overview just on the general plan, land use designation, and the zoning district, just for your reference. So this area right here is in the regional commercial area, and I have more description below, but I wanted to at least show you the maps first. And then this is the zoning district. Basically, it's Kingman Crossing Plan Development Area, so it has a special uses allowed and not allowed in that zone. As far as the, a couple of the parcels, which would be these main ones right here, 02 and 03, their general plan land use designation, as I said, is regional commercial, and these uses are designated in areas that are in or near adequate infrastructure and are accessible to a large population base in central Mojave County that would be necessary to support such commercial centers usually located along major arterials. So that definitely fits, right? And then as far as Kingman Crossing Plan Development Zone, the Kingman Crossing Zone is intended to provide for the development of business and service uses designed to meet the needs of the Kingman Crossing area located on both sides of the interstate. So it does apply to both projects, actually. There are quite a few uses allowed in this zone, but I just kind of highlighted a few that are not, because we probably want to look at this further at a later time. Some uses not allowed are called commercial recreational facilities indoor, and that would include things like your bowling alleys, indoor sports arenas, video arcades, and pool arcades. Movie theaters is not included in that. Theaters actually is allowed in this area. Meeting facilities, public or private, regional or neighborhood. Outdoor public uses like general parks. Public services, major and minor, are not allowed, but yet, like fire, police, they are. So this is just a little touch, and a lot of this, you know, we get back with community development. I did touch base with them prior to, so this is just a general overview of some things we need to think about. As far as the other parcel, 322-63-001, it's actually that triangle piece over here on the side. That one has the same land use designation. Nope, actually, wrong. Let me take that back. It actually has the land use designation of parks and open space and then rural residential for the zoning. So if there's some proposed uses we want in, you know, to show on this conceptual plan, then, you know, a reason would need to be processed at some point by the city. And it's actually a similar case, you know, for the Kingman Crossing project as well, because they may want some too. So I just thought I would note that as well. Economic development team would support this type amendment, if we're looking for recreational center or maybe some top golf-type golf places, then we would, you know, obviously need to amend the zoning district to allow for something like that. The original zoning district was approved in 2016, and the zoning code was updated about 2021. So there is probably a good reason to go back and review the original zoning district that went through at that time and look at it and just see if there's some uses that may want to be amended. And that's pretty much what I have as far as general plan and zoning. And, do you have a question, Jamie?
I do.
Oh, okay.
Well, I'm going to ask Jangus's question.
Okay.
He's on Zoom, but we talked about this last night, the zoning and how it aligns with your conceptual plan. And my guess was maybe we were talking about this because we could update this in the general plan that we're about to work on. Is that what you guys are thinking, is that we can maybe, you know, give approval or disapproval, but, and then add that to the general plan that they're getting ready to start working on?
Yes. It's definitely something to consider while going through the update, but even as it sits today, say we wanted to go through tomorrow and have a bowling alley on this property, then have to go through the rezone regardless of the update. So it's definitely, it's like, for now, we'd still need to do it, but for general plan update, you'd want to consider these things as going through the update.
Good.
Yes. And just to clarify, the general plan for the one parcel is the one that would be like parks and open space that you may have to amend now, and otherwise, it's the zoning on both of them.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay.
Sylvia, I've got a question.
Yes.
So the uses not permitted, was that an agreement that we, was that put together by prior city council, or was that as part of the working agreement that we had with the hospital to, as far as keeping those certain things out?
So when that rezoned or went through, that actually, yeah, that actually went through a process where the committee was involved, similar to the Wallaby Mountain Planning and Zoning District, where people participate, say what they'd like to see in those districts and not see in those districts, and then it did go through, like, planning and zoning and council and get approved at that time.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions for Sylvia?
Okay. Well, then, I am going to move on to having Todd from Selberg &amp; Associates come up and kind of do a little presentation himself. So, Todd, you can come up here. I got this for you. Oh, there you go.
Welcome, Todd. What's your last name again?
Brodiger.
Brodiger, okay. Welcome.
Wonderful, complicated last name. Wonderfully German. Todd Brodiger with Selberg &amp; Associates, mayor, council members. Really, my stance here is just to kind of give you an idea of what, how our help would, our presence would help in this process. So we, in general, for the master planning kind of process, what we end up really like to do at the beginning is, whether it's kind of regionally or even for facilities, we like to kind of determine long-term, short-term goals, kind of what's the general outlook, and then ultimately reach out to the kind of committee at large or get this council or anybody's input for as much uses that the city feels that its needs, kind of just really generate as much kind of talk about it as we can. That way, we can ultimately kind of take that, all that information, really consolidate it, and put square footages and sizes to things, and how many things can we actually fit in the area. Then ultimately, trying to go through, short-term goals, needs assessment, so analyze the data to kind of put together that, similar just to the conceptual plan that we had presented before, that was more or less just to give a, just a quick brush to say, here, if we cut these things out, this is kind of how the circulation would work with the interchange and how these uses can kind of fit into this area. We do that with the bubble diagrams, spaghetti diagrams, the whole fun slew of tools that we have, and determine adjacencies and what really ends up working well. And then, what we like to even kind of implore and is to really, like Bennett had mentioned earlier before, is it becomes a living document. So it's not something that's set in stone. You can manipulate it. I've seen firms, what they'll recommend is almost having like a three-ring binder, where you can kind of see past iterations, so you can see where we've come, how far we've gone, where we're at within the process, and really just keeping an open mind and making sure that, one, everything matches to what we're trying to achieve with our earlier goals that we just developed in the beginning of the process. Really, that's master planning in a nutshell for 101. If there's any questions.
Any questions for Todd?
Thank you.
Okay. We're easy on you today.
I think what I'd like to do is bring back up the map, that, you know, the plan, have you guys kind of look at it. I'm sure you've had some time to look at it, and then take some comments, any other questions about that. So, you want to grab it, or?
Mayor, councilmember Eric has a question. His hand is raised.
Oh, I'm sorry. Counselor Eric.
I was curious, what kind of a road are we going to be talking about here? It seems like it's going to be a really high-flow area with a hospital at the end of the stick. And is this going to create another Stockton Hill underpass, or do you have any insight on that? Four-lane, six-lane?
Well, I believe it's just the interchange that's actually coming off the highway. Like, it's the, it's not developed right now. I'm not sure the plan for...
Yeah, I think, is it a?
Yeah, no, I got that, but I mean, like, is it, we're putting roads there, and we're going to be building an underpass, right? Or is it just as-is?
The...
Bennett, that actual road that goes underneath, you know, connects one side of the freeway to the other, isn't that four-lane with the turning lanes?
I think there's, it's a, I believe it's a four-lane, two lanes each way.
Right.
It's the same design as what the Rancho Santa Fe interchange is, if I remember correctly.
Correct. And I understand Counselor Eric's concern, you know, for future growth and planning.
That plan has multiple hotels, two gas stations, a hospital, parks and rec, potentially, you know, other rec, recreational areas, even a convention center was mentioned, or a recrea, event center. I'm just worried about another chokehold, especially when you have emergency vehicles going from Wallaby Mountain Road to the closer hospital. That's why I brought this up.
Yeah, and this was just extremely conceptual, because really, in the process, this isn't even, we haven't even determined what the wants and needs actually are to come out of here. So this was more just kind of breaking this up to see what general sizes are. So I mean, with a little bit of high-end residential hotels and just general retail, that's the sizes that we kind of came out with for kind of big-box stores, small retail, kind of, it's a mix of everything, so, yeah, I mean, it's definitely a large site, so it's...
So with a fresh plot of land and a fresh plan, I would like to just mention that we should think of the future and do everything we can now so that we don't have to do it later in terms of size of road and stuff. So, that's it.
So, in regards, Jangus, in regards to the roads, this is a bubble map conceptual, so the actual, the next phase is to kind of lay those roads out, if this is the general idea of what we'd be looking at on those parcels. Is that the way I understand it in the process?
Yeah, the, and that's, yeah, it's just a bubble diagram for, like, we showed generalized roads, but there would be, a lot of this would be on-site kind of side streets, not main arterial. These would all be more subdivision kind of roads that would infill.
Okay.
So I would, in going through this process, I would recommend that we, you know, we will look at the road layout. Again, it is a concept. It's nothing final. It'll probably change in the future. Final engineering, all that stuff that'll be done down the road.
So, Jangus makes a great point, and couldn't we just plan for some additional right-of-way on each side for future growth in case that road needed to be expanded by two more lanes on each side?
Yeah, absolutely.
Mayor, the key to all this, this is just conceptual.
It is.
Mayor and council, Carl was just reminding me that there's been some preliminary work from engineering and public works on the planning for the roads in that area. Carl, I'll let you, if you had anything else to add to that.
Sure, I don't have all the details, but it's some of the product that's been brought before the council before. I believe it's supposed to go south to proximately southern. Is that what it is? And I don't think anything, I think we have the right-of-way acquired, and some of the designs already worked on. I don't know how far along we are. Obviously, if the engineer was here, could give better details, but definitely all of this is being considered, knowing what kind of impact it will bring into those residential communities.
And the other thing I just want to jump in on and say is that, as part of the public improvements, the street widening, there might be lanes where you have dedicated lanes that can turn into a complex like this. Those would all be something that would be probably part of a development agreement with the future developers, that they would put those public improvements in, and we'd probably likely reimburse with sales tax or what have you, or they may just be on the hook themselves for those improvements. But the point is, there has been some preliminary planning in this area already, and it's a good question that the council member that's remotely joining us today brought up. Again, this is just a very conceptualized plan before you tonight, and what they're really trying to seek from you is, you know, are they warm? Are they, are you getting like warm and fuzzy with what you see, or are there some things that you think are glaringly missing? The other part, the infrastructure, will come as part of this, so we're not going to plan for something like this and not include the infrastructure that's required as well.
Thank you.
Mayor?
Yes, Vice Mayor.
So, the way, the way, I mean, I understand what you're asking of us tonight. I'm just curious, what was provided to get us to this use of space? Did staff say, you know, we'd like five hotels, we'd like an event center, and then the firm just did space management and put everything in according to? I'm just trying to get to how we're here today, what direction was given to the firm? Because we had a prior city manager, we weren't privy to any of this information that was being done, and we didn't know that this was in process.
Sure.
So could you give me a little bit of background so I can get that warm and fuzzy?
Yeah, so going back to, originally, we were asked, you know, in preparation also for the market, what could be here, going back to what I talked about, the developers, that concept, and kind of getting ahead of just having a piece of property there and not doing anything or taking any steps towards something like this, and then, oh, let's run at that point. So, to kind of give us a head start, and then economic development took a look at, you know, obviously, we have an idea of what the needs are from talking with, you know, the people in the community, talking to our existing businesses, seeing what the other uses that we don't currently have, and that the community that we felt, staff felt, and also talking with Retail Coach. We had them involved in the process, which they'll be providing an update to you in November. So we worked with them. I believe engineering was just, at the beginning, you know, we sent this to them so they could at least know what was going on as well, you know, because there's water infrastructure, there's things like that, that we didn't know where those are currently, and we're going to at least probably show them coming into the site, not so much, you know, having, you know, all the plans and drawings of, here's where the water, the sewer go out from there. So that's really what it was. It was, hey, let's prepare in the event 2024 comes around, depending on what happens. You know, we have a good idea of, you know, a concept.
Okay.
You know, there was no, we're not currently talking with anybody about this, it's just in an effort to plan.
Okay. Well, and I mean, that helps. I hope that helps the public understand, too, that you didn't just cherry-pick certain things to put in here. I mean, you did your research, you did your due diligence with the needs. I'm happy to hear that you consulted with Retail Coach, you know, in what the needs are, so I'm happy to hear what you've just told me, so.
We also looked at larger communities that have already gone and grown, to the point that we feel like we're going to do with this type of a development, and that's why you see things like the big shots, or, you know, you see concepts where people are playing pickleball at restaurants, you know. So we looked at those type of developments in larger communities and said, you know, when we get to our population levels, you know, as this develops, is this something that, you know, the community would, it would be a good fit?
Okay.
So, we did add those. The, you know, we don't know where a rec center, you know, those are a lot of unknowns, you know, but let's plug it in here, and that's going to bring up other conversations. So I'm sure there's going to be additional conversations based upon event center, rec center, you know, where is the community on all that?
I, I, I hope that helps the public understand too, that you didn't just cherry pick certain things to put in here. I mean, you, you did your research, you did your due diligence with the needs. I'm happy to hear that you consulted with Retail Coach, you know, in, in what the needs are. So I, I'm, I'm happy to hear what you've just told me, so.
We also looked at larger communities that have already gone and grown to the point that we, we feel like we're going to do with this type of a development. And that's why you see things like the big shots or, you know, you, you see concepts where people are playing pickleball at restaurants, you know? So we looked at those type of developments in larger communities and said, you know, when we get to our population levels, you know, as this develops, is this something that, you know, the community would, it would be a good fit?
Okay.
So we, we did add those. The, you know, we don't know where a rec center, you know, those are a lot of unknowns, you know, but let's plug it in here and that's going to bring up other conversations. So I'm sure there's going to be additional conversations based upon event center, rec center, you know, what, where, where is the community on all that?
All right, well, and I, I love the forward thinking. I'm, I'm sure council will have lots of input as this document evolves. But I, I think you touched on a lot of things that our community does need. And you also touched on some of the needs that the council would like to go in a direction of an event center or a recreational center or both. So I, I just want to thank you. This is, this is a great start.
You're welcome. Yes, Council Ward.
Bennett, I'm, I'm new to this concept. I haven't been involved in it. The outline, where is that? Is that along Interstate 40, which?
Yeah, so it, it goes along Interstate 40, if you know where, you know, the hospital is, on, on the other side of Interstate 40.
Okay, that's where I assumed it was.
Yeah.
And then what are the, the outline of where, where does it end? Where does it end on that side?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay. That, that explains a lot.
Right, see, the hospital is right there. Yeah, it's essentially right there.
So there's three parcels.
They just put something on the screen here that actually is a little bit more explanatory.
Yes.
Okay.
So this, this area right here is the area that we're referencing.
Partial numbers, I'll figure it out. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yes, Council Savage.
I can tell that the KC PDZ zoning not permitted does include both sides of the freeway, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so no commercial recreational facilities, indoor bowling alleys, indoor sports arenas, but yet we have a big shot, hot, big hot.
Yeah, as a concept, that was something we put in there. And then that then references Sylvia's comments on, these are things that we're going to potentially want to look at if we're going to want to bring in these type of venues to this area ahead of time.
Now, are sports bars included in that? Well, I'm just saying, if someone like Buffalo Wild Wings or top notch sports bar.
I, I would imagine they would.
Would that be considered a restaurant?
I would imagine that would be a restaurant and that would be fine, like a Chili's, Applebee's, those are all.
All right, thank you.
And once again, as Sylvia, as she was explaining, we might have to go back and reexamine this whole code on what we're going to put in these locations, but this is just a start.
Yeah, if, if we feel like these are some things that the community might want, then we're going to want to look at the things that Sylvia.
Rezoning and doing all that.
On your own.
Yeah.
Mayor?
Yes.
I'm kind of jumping to interrupt, but just for kind of reference, this is part of the zoning code that lists the, the Kingman Crossing PDZ, and it has a list of all the types of facilities that are allowed or disallowed. And that's, I'm sure we can get a copy of that for you guys, just so you have a better understanding. And a lot of the things involved here though, it may say, you know, it says bar or tavern. I would make an assumption that, you know, the Buffalo Wild Wings would fit in there. Sometimes they don't necessarily match the necessary title of what it is. So then you have to look at what the definitions are. But if there is things that aren't available, as Sylvia was saying, we can always adjust either definitions or the zoning to make sure that we can get in there what, what the city council wants and the, the public wants, so. Sorry to interrupt, I just wanted to clarify.
No, we appreciate the clarification, Carl.
And the good point on that is a lot of times, if you have it ready ahead of time, then you're, you're one step with, with that being ready when that potential business says, I want to do that. And then you have to go through the process. So this is really forward thinking, based upon us even taking a look at this bubble map to start these conversations.
Right.
Mayor Watkins?
Yes.
Councilmember Eric would like to ask a question.
Yes, Counselor.
Jengus? Okay, can we go to slide three real quick? Hello?
Is this?
Yes, which one?
No, the one that says, this one, KX Ventures.
Yes.
You mentioned, you said that they have a right of refus, anything being built across from them. I was curious, what are they building? It's a shopping plaza and do you have, is it a shopping plaza? Or do you have any examples of something they might refuse? That, that seems like a lot of power and I don't know who they are. I'm new to this as well. So I just wanted to open this up a little bit, get a better understanding of who KX Ventures is to us. And if you can give us some background on them, like why do they have this first right of refusal?
Well, I guess I can jump in on some of that. Part of this project is all tied up with, it's called a development agreement, where we entered into an agreement with KX Ventures, which is basically a partnership with some developers and Kingman Regional Medical Center. This development agreement is designed to have the traffic interchange built. And as the, the language involved in this agreement is basically KX Ventures would be fronting the money to pay for the project. And then the city of Kingman, over the course of this development agreement, which I believe is 20 years, but don't quote me on that, would be paying them back for portions of the city's responsibility with the TPT tax. So we would spend, or we would be basically giving them up to 50% of the TPT collected in, in this designated area. Their development, I don't know what their plans are, because I don't know if we've been told that, but it would definitely be some commercial projects. And the idea of why we have this, this restriction is it's, it's the same, it's not quite the same language as the one we have with Rancho Santa Fe, but when you enter these types of agreements, they're investing a lot of money into their project. And I think the idea is for us not to necessarily compete too directly with them in the immediate future, meaning allow them to get their project moving, because that's how they're going to generate some income for them to pay back their own costs involved in this traffic interchange. And the current language is, it's this marketing restriction where we can't market it or do some development projects until January 1st to 24. And as I mentioned earlier, that's one of the dates that were probably was put on hold during the pandemic, where there's a clause in the development agreement that allows for, if there's a declared public emergency, that the progress of the agreement would be put on hold. We have not addressed those dates yet. I know that, I believe we're still waiting to, to get into a discussion with KX Ventures on that date. And that should help resolve that situation, if that makes sense.
Yes, thank you. A couple more questions done. So KX Ventures is a Kingman based entity?
Well, the, the hospital is definitely a Kingman based entity. I honestly, I'm not sure off the top of my head who the rest of their development partners are. I don't know if Bennett knows who they are.
Okay, and, and if I understood correctly, they're basically doing this whole thing on their side of the highway. They're developing and building on the reciprocal side. So they probably, there are they, they're having their own meetings like this and, and discussing within themselves. Can we do, can we invite them to a group session with, with us so that we can kind of be on the same page and find out what their future plans are so we can plan accordingly too? If we need to rezonate advance, we don't have to go through that headache. You know, at the starting line, we can prep in advance or, you know? I think having both sides of the interchange on the same plan without having to guess through fog would be very beneficial.
Mayor, if I may, I just wanted to just jump in really quickly. So I want to just clarify, so they're actually investing in the actual traffic interchange. So that is 100% their cost per the development agreement. In exchange for that, we're agreeing to reimburse them sales tax over the life of the development agreement or until we've met that threshold that we've agreed to. We also, the mayor and I, and I believe there might be one more council member, and I are meeting with the CEO of Kingman Regional Medical Center and a couple of their board members, just to kind of touch base and make sure that we're all on the same page, to your point. And what I'm going to do is I will share that information with the full council. We also have a executive session coming up soon to discuss the development agreement as it relates to KDP, and I believe that's on November 7th. So we're, we're trying to keep the council fully informed on these as there obviously have some, lots of moving parts. And your, your part about having our council and maybe their board meet together is a good idea, but I think it might be still a little premature. But it's something I think we should keep on our radar for a future date. So I just wanted to kind of get back at your questions that you asked, councilmember.
Thank you, I appreciate that. That's all for me.
Thank you, Council Eric. And of course, once again, we as councillors forget that we need to bring you up to speed. And so KDP, just as a reminder, is Rancho Santa Fe. KX Ventures and Kingman Crossing, of course, is the hospital. KRMC and their developer is KX Ventures right now. There might be others involved with the hospital, we don't know on their side, but that so far is what we know is Kingman, you know, KRMC and KX Ventures LLC. Now also, Council Eric, can you, Bennett, can you pull that one up? This one, this slide right here? Everything north of I-40 there, it's in the brown, it's where it's labeled Kingman Crossing is owned by the hospital. And they might even own more, I'm not sure. Bennett, correct me if I'm wrong.
I know they own the brown.
They own a, a chunk of it, yes. So that's why they're interested in this. Of course, once again, it gives them another entrance into their hospital as opposed to, you know, the other streets through the city. It'll be more direct route into I-40. So that's why they have such a major interest in all this and what's going on. So, but once again, please feel free, because we forget to, to bring you up to, we're trying to bring you up to speed and sometimes we forget to mention these things, so.
No, no, it's okay, please, you'll just get repetitive questions sometimes, so. And I also noticed that they, that blackout road was built pretty much to the, to the highway already, right? I drove out there the other day and everything to basically the A of Kingman and right before the circle was already laid out and built. So, no, I get it.
Yeah, I think it, it's, goes a little bit towards the freeway, but it stops and then it doesn't go to airway. It stops right where the hospital kind of ends. And so that part of the road would obviously need to be built yet.
Well, that big road to the, the black, to the, to the left there, that's Santa Rosa with the big sweeping curve, and that's what turned, accesses the hospital right now.
Yeah, this map is kind of deceptive when you look at it, because some of these roads in black do exist and some don't. It should probably, it should probably represent that way.
Maybe put dotted black lines where, where the proposed lane is. Once again though, Council Eric and all of us, we have to remember, the plans for the underpass are already solid. That's why they're, they were turned in at 95%. And that is, what, two lanes plus turn lane? So a total of five lanes that goes underneath I-40, if I, if I remember right, so.
Oh God, okay, all right, thank you.
Council Salie. Oh, do you have more, Council Eric?
No, no, I said thank you, thank you.
Okay, that's what I thought.
So I have several questions. So surprising, right?
Yes.
So I'll just start with, how much of this property do you think we're looking at leasing? And how much are we going to sell?
We haven't, we haven't looked at that.
Okay, so as a strategy, will that go into consideration as you're moving this plan along? Because I, I mean, I understand there's, you know, there's advantages to keeping some as a lease so that we have that ongoing revenue and that will help us maintain this area and maybe the, the amphitheater, you know, all these other things.
I think we'd, we'd have, if we were going to look at like how these other projects in other places have, if they've been developed that way, if they've been successful with some leasing components, you know, I, I, I don't think that we're going to get into that with, with the conceptual type, you know, layout. How the different projects come in on a case by case basis, I think would have to be looked at on a case by case unless we decided we definitely want to lock ourselves into leasing a certain percentage of this property, you know, as part of that, so I.
I'd be interested in having you do that research and then coming back and letting us know what other communities have done. We don't want to hinder the project, but I'd also, I wouldn't be opposed to locking in a percentage as a lease, just so that this area can pay for itself in the long term, other than the retail. So that was one question I had is lease versus sale. And then I was going to ask you about the retail space and if we've squeezed in all the retail that you think this area could handle, or if we could put more in there? Because that's ultimately.
Yeah, I think when you look at, there, there is a conceptual on the other side as well that, that Kingman Crossing Group has. I've seen it on some of their marketing documents. They have a lot of retail in there. So I think when you, you add in what we've, you know, kind of put in on our side and their side, you know, I, you know, couldn't you get rid of some more high density? You could potentially, you know, lower that down, but hotels are going to be needed.
Right, yeah, that's what I was looking at, maybe the residential.
So we have a hotel and convention center as well, you know? So is that, is that something that we think we can do? I mean, yeah, I mean, again, this is to get your guys' thoughts also, are we on the right track or should we adjust this based upon, you know, what your thoughts are? If you need us to go back and, and take a look at some more retail, maybe get some exact acreage for the entire parcel, we could do that.
Overall, I really like the plan. I, I like the mix. I think it delivers a lot of what the community is desperate for, which is more shopping, the amphitheater space, the, you know, the, what is it called? Big Shots Golf? And those are all really great things that would add to the quality of life here. I, you know, I, like I said, I just, we want as much retail as possible, right? We want to increase our sales tax revenues that are coming to the city so that we can pay for the things that we're struggling to pay for today. So my other question is, I know that the site is not ready. And it originally, I remember a discussion where we talked about when they excavate all this material to do these two projects, that we might be able to get some of that material to fill in those big holes that are on our side. Do you know if that's still a plan?
I don't know anything about that in regards to, yeah, I couldn't comment on that.
I ask because what we're talking about is changing these dates on the contract. And if the site isn't even close to being ready to start marketing it, or not marketing it, not marketing it, but it's not even ready to do anything with, because there's, you know, some major improvements that have to happen just to make it flatland. I would like to know what that timeline looks like, because if it's two years down the road, then we're going to say, who cares, Carl, if they want to push it back two years because the site's not even ready. If it's six months, then maybe we're going to want to renegotiate, you know, that we're only holding up our end of the development for six months or a year. So do you know what I mean? Why, why care about the dates if the site isn't even close to being ready? So if we had an idea of that timeline, that would help us negotiate with those new dates. My last question is about leakage. We have a plan on the hospital side for leakage, where they will not get 50% of the sales tax revenue if a business moves from, say, Stockton Hill to their site. They has to be all new businesses in order to have that revenue sharing. What are we going to do on our side to try to stop businesses from relocating to this new area? Because what will really hurt us is if people leave Stockton Hill to go to this new area of town and now we have all this open retail space, you know, on Stockton Hill.
Yeah, I, I don't know if you can limit, you know, I, I, yeah, I just don't know if, you know, how those limits would work, how you can say, yeah, you can come, you can't come unless you tie it to, I mean, I really don't know.
I'm wondering what other communities have done, or if there's, if there's an opportunity to try to dissuade that, but still fill the space.
Maybe some of the leakage, you know, multiple locations, you know, serving one side of the community, another store serving the other. one side of the community, another store serving the other side. It's probably more of a lot of fast food, you'll probably see that.
Sure.
Duplications.
And that's fine.
Yeah.
If they're expanding, but if they're closing to open up in this new location now.
Yeah, and, and, you know, sometimes, though, that offers other options in those spaces. And, and, you know, gives another potential retailer an option at less market. So, and does that really affect tax revenue for us? We're still getting the same. It's where, right now, we're losing to maybe somebody going out, out of the area to shop. So, we can look at it, and Sylvia and I will, will take a look at it and
Okay.
And see if that becomes an issue from, an example, like a Ross moving from one to the other, or, you know, or, you know, it would be unique.
Right.
But we've got, we've got projects like Hobby Lobby, that we can't get them into any space, because we don't have the appropriate size in the building. So
Right.
Those type of projects are gonna really go towards these, these markets.
Sure. And that, right, and that's what we're really excited about. I just think about JCPenney's moving out of that shopping center, and it's still empty. You know, that, that one particular shopping center has a lot of open space that they cannot fill.
And a lot of that is, the, the owner and how they're negotiating.
Okay.
And what they would like to get for lease rates. Those things that we just can't control, and whether or not they're just waiting for that right deal that works for them.
Gotcha.
You know, we, we'd worked on projects that they couldn't work out the right lease rate in there, but they were able to work out a lease rate in another center. So, you know, the more options we have, the better position we'll be in to fill them.
So it's not that Stockton Hill isn't unattractive to commercial, it's just hard to fit a business, to get a business to fit up with that open commercial space, is what you're saying?
Yeah, you gotta have everything aligned. You know, the, the owners might have to be flexible on a certain front. And if, if they don't want to, then, then really, we're limited with that space.
Right. That's tough.
So, but, I mean, we are seeing that fill a little bit. We saw ALO
Yeah.
Takes, now, it's, I don't know that we get any tax revenue off of that, but they, they filled the space.
Right.
And now we need more space, you know, so.
Okay.
Yeah.
Councilmember, we'll, we'll come back and we'll research that further.
Okay.
And see what the development agreement states about leakage, and if, if our property's being held to the same standard.
Okay, I appreciate it. That was the last of my questions.
Okay. Thank you, Council Sally. Any other questions for Bennett?
I do, I have one.
Yes, Council Walker.
Bennett, we've looked at, and talked about possible event center, conference center. Have we talked to any companies about doing a feasibility study on that, what Kingman needs?
No, we have not. Our department hasn't looked into anything like that.
I think, you know, as a council, I think that may be something we want to push staff to start looking at, is do, getting us a feasibility study on an event center slash conference center. Let's see what the, what they come back with. That's all I have.
Okay.
Yeah, so we're, we're getting some good direction on that. I think what we'll do is, we'll come to a future council meeting and make that a formal direction to the staff, because this is really just a work session. But we'll do that, because I've heard that from one other council member as well. So I think that's a good idea. So, we'll add that to our list of things to bring back to you in the future, to give us direction on that.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions then? Thank you, Bennett.
Okay.
Appreciate it, all the presentation.
Thank you, you guys. Appreciate it.
And Todd from Suburban Associates, and Sylvia. Thanks. Sean, we didn't pick on you tonight.
Want to step up?
I have to ask.
We're glad you're here for support. So, I think if there's no other questions or about this subject, I think we can adjourn. Great. Thanks again for being here this evening. And let's go watch the Diamondbacks win.